Not used to people standing up for me. We will bring this meeting of the Peterborough City Council to order for November twenty seven, two thousand and twenty three. Two of our councillors are participating this evening via Microsoft Teams councillor Joey La Chica, councillor Alex Burke and councillor Andrew Beamer is not with us this evening because he's on a work assignment. We respectfully acknowledge that we're on the treaty and the traditional territory, the Mississauga, Abidias and Abic. We offer our gratitude to the first people for their care for and teachings about our earth and our relations. May we honour those teachings. We now have thirty seconds of silent reflection. I would now ask everyone to stand for the singing of the national anthem. This council for the city of Peterborough recognizes the principles contained in our constitution and the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. So I'd like to move the approval of minutes of October twenty third, two thousand and twenty three and November sixth, two thousand and twenty three. Councillor Akey, councillor Real, comment your questions. We'll go to a vote. Just waiting for councillor La Chica.
Your worship councillor La Chica has messaged, yes?
And that is carried. The next item of business is a declaration of procurement interest, declarations of procurement interest. Mister Clerk, I will declare one dealing with item nine A seven, which is the Trent University application for the battery storage. Since I sit on City of Peterborough Holdings Inc. as a director and we have a competitive application that's being made at exactly the same time. Next item of business is registered delegations. I would now ask Julie Davis to come forward, please Julie, welcome. If we could have your name and address for the public record. You'll have five minutes at the end of four. I will give you the one minute signal. Welcome Julie, good to see you.
Standing Trent University sixteen hundred West Bank Drive. Thank you everybody for the chance to to speak to the North End Peterborough Storage System project. And I'm joined tonight by Margaret Koontz from Atura Power, the project component, and Jim Fonger from Amoresco and Amoresco will provide the engineering procurement and construction services. They will answer any technical questions and I just want to speak briefly to the importance of the project to to Trent and answer some of the questions that were raised at council last week, just to make sure that everybody has a full understanding of the project. So this is. Thank you. So what is the project? So it was briefly, it's a green energy project that seeks to address the looming shortage of electricity supply in the province. Specifically, it's a battery energy storage system that utilizes lands that are close to transmission lines to make energy production efficient and affordable. So the proposed project would be able to store an output to the grid, one hundred and thirty two megawatts of electricity. At the battery store energy when demand is low and when the provincial grid is producing the lowest cost and lowest carbon energy and use it to provide power back to the grid at peak times. Where will it be located? So we have identified a location of approximately ten to fifteen acres on the north side of the hydro corridor on our east bank. So it needs to connect into the transmission grid and that's why this project is ideal for this location. In the Trent Lands and Nature Areas Plan, which is Trent's master plan that was approved by the board in two thousand and twenty one, one of the main purposes of that plan was to identify in advance lands that were suitable for different projects. And those lands were identified to have low or no environmental constraints and are designated for future university use. So Atura will lease these lands from Trent. What are the benefits of the project and what will it look like? One of the questions. I would liken it to looks like a solar farm, except their batteries encased in cabinets instead of the solar grids. This is an example of what it might look like. And as I described, it's connecting to the transmission and storing that power. There will be onsite monitoring of that process as well. So as a green energy project, it does support that increasing demand for electricity. Electric vehicles is one example. And importantly, it helps with the stability and the reliability of the supply. So having that stored energy when there is an increased demand that could produce brownouts and blackouts. From an environmental standpoint, it is proven technology. The batteries are in weatherproof cabinets that are monitored remotely at all times, twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty five days a year. The location is isolated. There's no environmental features of concern on that site. And importantly, if the project is selected, it will need to go through regular planning approval processes and environmental studies. And all of those studies would be involving public consultation and be on the website as required. From, I just want to speak briefly to the the benefits from a Trent standpoint. Certainly, we are advancing any opportunities to advance green energy. We will be working with the School of the Environment on research and doing some work with students to understand the benefits of battery energy. Certainly, it will provide for us land lease revenue, which is really important at a time when we've had ten years of no increases in our government grants and tuition was frozen ten years ago and hasn't been released. So certainly land lease revenue is one of the ways we are exploring to ensure that the university is still a very significant part of the the community's prosperity. And of course, there is lots of, you know, broader benefits to the the Ontario system and to the region to have the battery energy storage project here. The process is run by the independent electricity, electricity system operator, I E S O, the Crown Corporation. And they are running this as a competitive procurement process. The new information that I wanted to bring forward from the last time we met, Atura Power is actively engaged with Hiawatha First Nation and others to take an equity position in the project to support the provincial goal of ensuring economic benefit for Indigenous communities in energy projects. And based on the discussion that the council had the last meeting, should the bid be successful and the project proceeds, Atura Power would provide a one thousand dollars per megawatt of contracted capacity and annual contribution to the city as a host municipality. And so if we're successful, that would be about a hundred and twenty five thousand a year. So in terms of the the next steps, a significant amount of work has been done by the university and the proponents to prepare this bid. It has gone through our board of directors.
Julie, just to let you know, we, you got one minute left.
Great. And we will need approval of the resolution this evening. The submission deadline is December twelfth. And it is a highly competitive process. And as we we talked about at the last meeting, there are no rating criteria points for location. The evaluation process is based on the rated criteria points. And those with the lowest rated criteria points will get the the opportunity to move their projects forward. So, thank you very much.
Julie, thank you very much for that informative presentation. Are there questions from members of council? Councillor Baldwin, please.
Yeah, so thanks, your worship. Julie, thanks for being here. I was pleased to hear that you had outlined that the project has to go through the regular planning process and that would be public consultation with respect to this. Correct me if I'm wrong, project would receive additional points towards your application if endorsed by city council. And if if it's not endorsed by council, which which we did do during general committee. Would that make your your bid not as favorable? I understand you have to have the municipality in support of to go further, correct?
Yes, it would result in points being deducted or not obtained in the process.
Right. And and through you, your worship, would it be fair to say that, I know there's another bid coming from, I think, the Kofi Board. Could there be more than one successful applicant in our particular area or region?
Yeah, so we understand that because there's no rated criteria points for location, that is the case. And in fact, there are three projects coming forward to county council. So there's there's a dearth of opportunities perhaps for for this region to be competitive.
Sure. And and the last one, your worship, you did mention Hiawatha. I'm assuming Julie, that Trent with this particular project has done the consultation with Curve Lake First Nation as well?
Yes, we have a very proactive relationship with the lands and resource consultation liaisons. We meet with them monthly and so they were the first people that that we called once the I E S O confirmed the deliverability test, said that this project could move forward. And there were no concerns expressed by, we have Hiawatha, Alderville and Curve Lake on that meeting. So they were the first ones to get that information.
Thank you very much. Thanks, your worship.
Thanks very much. Any other members of council, some questions for Julie? Julie, thank you very much. Good to see you. The next individual for presentation, Dylan Scott, Mister Scott, please. And you're here this evening on the multi-use sport and entertainment centre update. And could I have your name and address for the public record? You have five minutes, sir, to make a presentation. At the end of four minutes, I'll let you know. You got one minute left.
Awesome. Thank you. So I've been thinking for a while of how I want to start this speech of sorts. And initially, I was going to try to highlight certain aspects of the report that I deemed to be slightly either misleading or could use more depth. For example, the list of local venues, the capacity of Trent University or the operating deficit of the PMC. But then after more thought, I realized that I'm a little bit out of my league in that regard. I wouldn't be providing any new information that the council or city staff hasn't really considered. So instead, I've decided to use my time to speak of my experience as a Trent University student. Came here four years ago and during that time I have sat, I love Peterborough, essentially. This this place has become my home. And this is, this is a bit of a unique experience among Peterborough students, especially those who came here like I did during the pandemic. So in that regard, let's see. And also many students see coming to Peterborough as a small step towards a bigger city, using it as a trampoline of sorts. Instead of, like myself, I see it as a garden where I want to plant my roots among the flowers, weeds and trees alike. So in that regard, I I've realized that the city has lots of places to go and lots of places to see, but few places where I can just go and be me among others who are being themselves. And I want this to change. So in order to change this, I want to host more events. Events that give people the opportunity to meet people who share an interest instead of a characteristic. For example, Pete's Games do this most effectively in town where you see a wide range of people of all ages, nationalities, supporting our local team. So in order to provide more events like this, I think we should use existing venues in Peterborough and host more of these unique experiences. On the topic of students, there are fifteen thousand of them at Trent University alone. And while most of them don't have a lot of money, there is a system called Trent Cash, which has an excess of money to the point of five million dollars in revenue per year, which is only able to be spent at one of twelve registered businesses, including Skip the Dishes. It was initially supposed to be a means of providing parents a way to give students money without knowing that that they won't spend it on illicit substances like alcohol. However, that's not the case anymore. So essentially, I want these events hosted in Peterborough to act as a bridge between students in the downtown core, providing them more opportunities to get involved in the community. Because I'm lonely and for some reason I see standing in front of council discussing it with you guys as easier than just saying hi to some new people to try to make new friends. So seeing as they talk fast, I've got a little bit more time left. So I'll tell you about my dream event, if that's okay. The decade disco. So imagine an event where at the start of every hour, it's a wheel of decades is spun. A wheel of decades, including the forties, all the way to the two thousands. This would decide the decade of the hour. During this decade of the hour, you would have performances from people born during that decade, performances from people who are dressed up during that decade, as well as just dances and a theme of going to the past and remembering what was to find out what could be in the future. I see events like this, unique experiences that bring people of all ages together to share experiences under a, an umbrella of friendship and connection as the future. And I think that the arena is a great step towards that. I, for what I support the arena, I didn't at first, but after reading into it more, I my mind has changed. However, given the fact that I'm a student, my perspective is that of living twenty one years instead of looking twenty one years into the future. So I essentially want to think of more short term solutions to this. And I see events that connect people as the ultimate way to do that. And maybe I'll host some, who knows? And that's, that's that.
Thank you. Do any members of council have a a question for Dylan? Thanks very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kim Dolan and Brittany McMillan. Go forward, please. Welcome. If we could have your names for the public record and your addresses. You'll have five minutes to make a presentation. At the end of four minutes, I'll give you the one minute signal.
Wonderful. Brittany McMillan and the address for KAC is three sixty George Street North.
I, Kim Dolan at the Y W C A two sixteen Simcoe Street.
Right. Good evening.
Sarah is doing tech for us.
Yes, Sarah is, Sarah's our tech. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. I'm Brittany McMillan and I'm the executive director at the Court of Sexual Assault Centre. And with me today is Kim Dolan, executive director of Y W C A Peterborough Halliburton. We are here today in our capacity as leadership within the violence against women sector, representing the Peterborough Domestic Abuse Network, also known as PDan, a group of thirty plus organizations operating in Peterborough City and County that work to support survivors in some way.
November twenty fifth marked the United Nations International Day for the Elimination of Violence and the Release of O A's Intimate Femicide List. Violence against women and girls remains one of the most prevalent and pervasive human rights violations in the world. We are here today in support of the motion to declare gender based violence and intimate partner violence an epidemic in the city of Peterborough and to urge you to vote in favor of this motion. Gender based violence describes different types of violence and throughout this presentation, we will refer to all forms of violence as domestic violence or DV.
The timing of our delegation is intentional as today, November twenty seventh, is one of the sixteen days of activism to end gender based violence. We want to note that most recently, the media has provided coverage on the domestic violence case in St. Marie that ended with the murder of a woman and her three children. We know that people in our community have also been killed as a result of DV. We are not here today to ask for funding. Our group of thirty plus organizations are actively responding to incidents of violence, including the physical, emotional, financial, sexual and other forms of violence that women identified people and children are experiencing in our community every day. With that in mind, we are collectively asking you to recognize that a large number of your constituents are being impacted by violence.
So we've provided you with statistics. The second annual community snapshot shows the two thousand and twenty two data from our community partners, city police and OPP shelters, crisis lines, the hospitals, social services and other organizations. The snapshot is important, but it's not the whole picture. Only six percent of survivors of sexual assault said that they reported the assault to police and only one in five of those experiencing gender based violence said they called police. Eighty percent of people don't report. In our community, that's over ten thousand people who were victims of gender based violence last year. Our delegation is part of a broader effort by domestic abuse coordinating committees across the province to take action on the eighty six recommendations from the provincial coroner's inquest into the September twenty second, two thousand and fifteen femicides of three women in Renfrew County who were murdered on the same day by the same man with whom they'd each had prior relationships. The report was provided ahead as of this session as an essential backgrunder. The recent inquest into the death of Gladys Ryan in Northumberland County introduced thirty two recommendations and echoed that intimate partner violence be declared as an epidemic.
There are a few other points that we'd like to draw your attention to. Our systems of support are complex and limited. Experiencing DV involves a number of different systems and supports, most of which overlap and have their own separate processes and scope. DV not only impacts physical, emotional, mental wellbeing of those affected, but also has significant, significant economic cost. The Justice Department prepared two reports based on a two thousand and nine study of costs related to violence. DV overlaps with the housing and homelessness crisis. It is one of the leading causes of homelessness amongst women and children and the risk of homelessness is one of the leading barriers for people seeking to leave abusive relationships. Survivors identify the following gaps as barriers for for them. Lack of funding for long term counselling, the need for community education and prevention, notably with youth, and the need for training to ensure services and organizations know how to intervene and refer to survivors or refer survivors to appropriate help, including health, community and social services, schools, workplaces, places and faith based organizations.
We invite you to attend the vigil at city hall on December sixth at five P M. to mark the National Day of Remembrance and Action on Violence Against Women and honour the lives lost to gender based violence and their loved ones and to attend our It Happens Here event on December seventh to hear directly from survivors and the people who support them.
Can you afford then it left?
So just to wrap through you, Mayor Mayor Leo, we offer appreciation to councillor La Chica for bringing forward this motion and urge the city of Peterborough to join us and seventy two municipalities across Ontario to bring much needed attention and support to move this issue out of the shadows. And thank you.
I want to thank you for a presentation and thank you for all the work you do and bring a most serious issue into the mainstream for all of us to understand and bring about proactive things to do our very best to eliminate gender based violence. So we thank you for that. Councillor Real, please.
Through his worship, thank you very much for being here tonight. I think then the night that councillor Chica brought this, I mean, I think sometimes we get sensitized to things and we're not hearing what's being said. If you read the news today, it was two domestic violence things over the weekend. Probably more happened than made the news. So resonated with me when you people, women come here tonight, you make this presentation. This is happening every day. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you councillor Real. Any other questions? Thank you again so much for your presentation this evening. Next, we have Matt Genzerbor. He's coming forward this evening with a presentation on the on bylaw providing powers of entry for the purpose of inspection. Matt, please, if we get your name for the public record, you'll have five minutes to make a presentation and I'll let you know when you have one minute left.
So, oh, all right, is that better? Thank you. So I would like to thank Mayor Mayor Leo and council for taking time to hear me speak today. My name is Matt Gansbor and I live in the Monaghan District. I'm here to talk today to talk about the proposed inspection bylaw. But to start, I would like to say that I watched a recording of the November sixth meeting and would like to recognize councillors La Chica, Burke, Beamer, Crowley and Vassalitis for voting against this motion. I was happy to see that I don't have to come up here and speak against something that was unanimously carried. I think your votes recognise the priorities of the people. In the November sixth recording, I heard statements from Commissioner Potts, but I still have many concerns. I believe I've read all the reports and bylaws that have been mentioned while discussing this issue and I get have a good grasp on the totality of the information. I heard Commissioner Potts reference bylaw twenty dash zero seven six, the enforcement bylaw as a driving force behind the suggestion of this bylaw. I think this should have been included in the strategic plan portion of the recommendation if it's going to be referenced in discussions. But Commissioner Potts mentions council's direction under this law bylaw to be the most efficient, effective means of achieving compliance. When I looked up this bylaw, the long form name appears to have five keywords. Twenty dash zero seven six being a bylaw to establish transparent, consistent, fair, unbiased and effective process. I do not believe passing this bylaw to secure the powers in section four thirty six will benefit transparency. I have a strong belief these powers would be very inconsistent and could be very biased. Having enforcement inspecting your property because your neighbors don't like you would not be fair at all. Nowhere in the enforcement services report did I see that officers were ineffective due to their inability to inspect private property with no notice. Page thirteen of the report says, the officer reports properties are inspected and work orders are issued. But the volume is such that the properties are not re inspected at the deadline, which then leads to a low number of cases being closed. This bylaw will do nothing to solve this problem.
This bylaw will do nothing to solve this problem. The Municipal Act, section four thirty-five, already grants powers of entry specifying reasonable notice should be given except cases or except in cases of public safety. I think that these powers are sufficient and take into account a landowner's reasonable expectation to privacy. The Charter of Rights and Freedoms has this to say about privacy. Privacy, personal, territorial, and informational is essential, not only to human dignity, but also to the functioning of a democratic society. This is not my attempt at a legal argument. I'm aware these powers are well-established. It is just meant to impress the true weight and value that I and most people put on privacy and the contempt we have for anything that could erode it. To simply they, to simply say that we should adopt this power because for section four thirty-six provides it is not enough. To simply point to other municipalities that have adopted this power is not enough. A vote for this bylaw is a vote against the wishes of the people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Matt, for your presentation. Are there questions for Matt? Thank you very much, sir. The next item of business is our um, our consent agenda, our reports to be approved under one motion. Does anybody want to speak to nine A one? Nine A one. Nine A two. Nine A three. Nine A four. Nine A five, nine A five. Nine A six. And nine A seven is separated out because there is a preferential growing interest. Uh, nine B one. Nine B one. Nine C one. Nine C two. Nine C three. Nine C four. Nine C five. Nine C six. So nine A five and nine A seven uh are be, oh, I'm sorry, Matt. Sorry. Oh, okay. Mr. Clerk, maybe you can help me here. What do they have?
Thanks, your worship. I'll just ask if Counselor Burke would respond, please, and then Counselor Chica.
Should that Counselor probably?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Clerk. Can you hear me okay?
Thank you.
Um, through the chair, I'd had my hand up to um speak to the nine C five inspection bylaw. Thank you.
Now, sir, Burke, that's already been separated out.
Okay, thank you.
Does Counselor Chica have anything?
Yes, thank you very, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair, your worship. Um, I just had very brief remarks on um nine C six, if I could. I was, I was having a technical issue earlier, and I just wanted to very briefly speak to that. Thank you.
Not a problem. So all the consent items, with the exception of nine A five, nine A seven, nine C six, would somebody move them? Thank you, Counselor. Oh, sorry, Counselor Pernell, you're, thank you. Yep. And and Counselor Dugay, you're second it?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to a vote. And that is Carrie. Nine A five, nine A five. Counselor L, you wanted nine A five, is that right? Oh, sorry, Counselor Pernell, please, nine A five.
Yes, your worship. Um, after discussion, oh, let me call it up, sorry. Uh, but after discussion with staff, um, they have presented a case um talking about um just uh the available resources and uh the fact that we might be able to access the accelerator fund for the new uh parking permit pilot. Um, and the request was made very respectfully that we uh initiate this in two thousand and twenty-five instead of two thousand and twenty-four. And um I have forwarded uh that slight revision to our clerk. Um, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer it, or perhaps Mr. Appleby could answer it, but really, we're just deferring the pilot by one year. Um, it was a very reasonable request.
Counselor Pernell, you're saying two thousand and twenty-four gets moved to two thousand and twenty-five, is that right? Friendly amended. Uh, Counselor Dugay, please.
Uh, yes, your worship. Uh, to Counselor Parnell's request, I've had opportunity to briefly review matters with um cities planning staff, and I would support the friendly amendment. It's a matter of resources, and so that we can appropriately prepare for um the project. We could spend two thousand and twenty-four preparing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions on that? We'll go to a vote.
Worship, just to clarify, it's moved by Counselor Pernell and seconded by Counselor Dugay. Thank you. Slow that now.
Sir Rial had wanted to second it.
Um, okay.
If we can give him the option.
So we have Counselor Pernell moving in. Counselor Rial, seconded. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Got all our bases covered. And that is Carrie. Someone like to move, uh, next item is nine A seven. That's the Trent University application. Moved by Counselor Phil Siliadis, seconded by Counselor Baldwin. Observe your questions. Observe your questions. We'll go to a vote. I can't vote. That is Carrie. Next item is nine C five, uh, the bylaws. Yes, Counselor Burke, please proceed. Counselor Burke?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Mayor Leo, through you, I just um, I think my comments around this from when we first discussed it hold. Um, I just don't view it as a priority right now, and I'm worried that um people could see it as an overreach, and for those reasons, I won't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Burke. Any further discussion, once, twice, we'll go to a vote.
Did it move or seconded, your worship?
Counselor Baldwin's moving in, I take it? And a seconder? Counselor Rial, but now, any further comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. And that is Carrie. Nine C six, Counselor Chico, please.
Uh, thank you very much, your worship. Um, I just, I just wanted to quickly uh say how much I appreciated your words of support as well as uh uh the scenario that the Counselor Rial um shared when after the delegation spoke. And and thanks to to Kim Dolan and to Brittany McMillan for bringing uh our local statistics forward, speaking to our community statistics. And I just wanted to 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 say that, you know, since our last general committee meeting, when the motion came forward, um, we we've since on November fifteenth um received the information that the government of Canada federally and Ontario have signed a bilateral agreement to end gender-based violence. So, you know, we're joining not only other municipalities, but our federal government and the province of Ontario uh to to find the path to change, uh, to name it, to acknowledge it, and to find a better way for our communities and for our own city of Peterborough. So um I just, I thank the the table for the unanimous support at general committee and appreciate uh the reinforcement tonight and for for those who shared. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Chica. Any further comments, further comments? It was moved by Counselor Chica, seconder Counselor Rial. Uh, just remind everybody about the events taking place on December the sixth, and uh I encourage all of us to be up for that, to accommodate in our schedules. I will go to a vote. Kim or Brittany, do we have a time on that event on the sixth? Five P M, there we go. Thank you very much. Oh, I forgot to vote too. That's Carrie. We have no notices of motion at this time. Um, the next item was approval bylaws, eleven A. Uh, we have bylaw eleven A one, twenty-three, one twelve, being a bylaw providing powers for the entry of the purposes of inspection, and bylaw number eleven A two, twenty-three, one, one, three, being a bylaw to establish the responsibility of the chief administrative officer of the city. Somebody like to move those two bylaws, Counselor Baldwin, a seconder, Counselor Dugay. Comps or questions? Observe your questions. We'll go to a vote. That's Carrie. Other business, any member? Counselor Rial, please.
Through his worship, I just want to announce that we moved our first twelve people into modular homes today. Um, it went seamlessly. Um, hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have far fifty people in their new homes. Um, certainly the inclement weather, certainly timing. I'm told that also Trinity should be coming on stream midweek.
Thank you very much, Counselor L. Uh, any other other business for members of council? Next item is the confirmation bylaw, twenty-three, one, one, four, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council that's meeting held on November twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Someone like to move it? Counselor Hakey, second Counselor Baldwin, comms or questions? We'll go to a vote. That is Carrie. Someone like to move a German, Counselor Hakey, secondor Counselor Baldwin. We'll go to a vote. That is Carrie. Thank you very much, colleagues. Thank you very much, staff. Thank you very much for everybody in our audience this evening. Have a good evening.